The 25th day of the session was held. We were all present. We were able to hear the speeches at the same time, including the members of the House of Delegates. We were able to talk in the evening. We were able to talk about the first regular session. We were able to assign assignments, and we were able to help the members of the House of Delegates. So this time, we were able to observe the silent prayer. Speaker Gibson Kanai. Please. Please.
Speaker Gibson Kanai.
Aye.
Delegate Jay Blesso Adorkroy.
Aye.
Delegate Yutaka Gibson Jr.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Mario S. Colibert.
Aye.
Delegate Noah Kamson. Delegate Orsia Franz Cosole.
Aye.
Delegate Sebastian R. Marino.
Artian.
Delegate Elender Ngiramakati.
Aye.
Delegate Stephanie Ngiroymay.
Aye.
Delegate Rebecca Sebald Ngirmaait.
Artian.
Delegate Francisca Rulukot Oto.
Artian.
Delegate Mangur W. Alulko.
Aye.
Delegate Timothy R. Sinzak.
Aye.
Delegate Nays Nswalaply.
Present.
Delegate Silveryous O. Talley.
Aye.
Floor Leader Warren S. Umetaro.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker Kanaya Korum.
I am Mr. Speaker Kanaya Korum. The delegate is going to ask for an excuse. He said he would like to make some comments. I would like to make some comments. And I will ask the floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, we are able to hear the members of the House of Delegates. We have heard the earlier agenda. We want to pay attention to the meeting. The number 15 agenda. The House of Delegates' 12 Olbi Rakhulaw legislative agenda. It is placed there. And we are able to hear it. We want to highlight the legislative agenda. We want to adopt the process. We want to part the journal of the officials in its entirety. We want to suspend rules. We want to continue the legislative agenda. We want to follow the earlier schedule. We want to suspend rules. We want to continue the legislative agenda. We want to update the calendar.
We are able to hear the floor. The floor. We want to suspend the order of the calendar. We want to see if the floor can continue. We want to hear.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to make a motion to adopt the legislative agenda of the House of Delegates. We want to move on to the next one. We want to hear the floor. We want to talk about the meeting. We want to hear the meeting. The motion is to adopt the legislative agenda.
We want to hear the floor. The mission number six. We want to continue the legislative agenda. We want to hear the floor. We want to move on to the adoption. We want to hear the document, Mission Communication Number Six. We are able to hear the meeting. We want to hear the House of Delegates' legislative agenda. We want to hear the House of Delegates' legislative agenda. We are able to hear.
Legislative Agenda Introduction. The House of Delegates of the 12 Olbi Rakhulaw introduces this legislative agenda to share how we will be focusing our work on issues of importance for individuals, communities, states, and the Republic of Palau. The legislative agenda will serve as a guide that will be implemented through meaningful and impactful legislative actions. We are proposing this legislative agenda along with the vision to strengthen, evolve, and create new opportunities and unlock the diverse array of potential that exists on the island while at the same time protecting and preserving our sacred traditions, cultures, and environment. Vision. The House of Delegates of the 12 Olbi Rakhulaw is excited to share our legislative vision, which will guide our work toward improving the quality of life for all Palauans. Our legislative vision for the 12 Olbi Rakhulaw is reflection of numerous events leading up to this present moment in time. What we foresee as pressing issue and priorities in near and distant future and our core values. Over the course of the next four years, we aspire to advance economic, social, cultural, and environmental sustainability while addressing the immediate and long-term needs of the Republic of Palau. We envision a self-reliant Palau that prioritizes the well-being of its citizens. By working together, the diversification of our economy, sustainable practices, safety and cybersecurity initiatives, improvements to our healthcare system, and empowering our workforce, we aspire to build a resilient nation where every Palauan has the opportunity to live a fulfilling life. As an island nation operating in the complex and rapidly advancing global environment, we strive to work collaboratively on issues that extend beyond our borders. To this end, we will continue our proactive engagement with regional and international counterparts. We recognize the importance of our diplomatic relations and friendships. And that through our joint effort and support, we provide one another. Greater progress can be achieved. This legislative agenda identifies the key legislative priorities for state and the republic that we believe the House of Delegates must address in order to successfully pull our nations out of the COVID recovery era and into a new era defined by economic resilience, social stability, and environmental conservation. The key legislative priorities are: One, economic diversification and crowd. Two, tourism. Three, employment and housing. Four, immigration control and reform. Five, health and medical care. Six, cybersecurity and cyber safety. Seven, public and maritime safety. Eight, environmental and climate change. Nine, infrastructure development. The 12 Olbi Rakhulaw stands ready to develop and deliver meaningful and impactful legislation. Starting at the individual level, we aim to help the most vulnerable on a societal level. We aim to improve opportunities for all in advance and protect the safety and sanity of the nation. The Republic of Palau and Palauans will be the priority of our legislative work. We will also contribute to regional and international effort, uphold international law, and honor our international commitments. Our diplomatic ties along with our regional and international friends and partners are invaluable to our work. After all, we alone cannot tackle all of the regional and transnational issues that confront our small island nations. We call on all citizens, government agencies, and partners in region and internationally to join us in achieving these goals, ensuring that Palau remains a beacon of sustainability, cultural pride, and opportunity for generations to come. Signed by all members of the House of Delegates 12 Olbi Rakhulaw.
We want to hear the floor. We want to hear the floor. We want to hear the floor. We are able to hear the members of the House of Delegates. We are able to hear the members of the House of Delegates. We want to hear the members of the House of Delegates. We want to hear the members of the House of Delegates. We want to hear the members of the House of Delegates. We want to hear the members of the House of Delegates. Any more members? Delegate Nswalaply.
Speaker. Mr. Speaker. We want to hear the cybersecurity. We want to hear the healthcare. We want to hear the freezing system. We want to hear five hours. I am the speaker. It is one of the items listed under the legislative agenda. We want to hear it. I think one of the priorities is to talk about it. We want to talk about it. We want to hear the hospital. Everything was done manually. We want to hear the other things. We want to hear the things that are not really fully exposed to. We want to hear the expert from Australia. We want to hear the things. They say, "I want to example." We want to hear the cybersecurity. We want to hear the things as well as the republic. Over the time, it's going to have more effects on maybe different ministries. We want to hear it. We want to hear the legislative agenda. We want to hear it. Mr. Speaker.
I am the floor leader. We are able to hear the members of the House of Delegates. We want to hear the members of the House of Delegates. We want to hear the legislative agenda. We want to hear the cybersecurity. We want to hear the delegate. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things before. We want to hear the things. 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 We want to hear the things weeks ago. We want to hear the things. 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 One of the issues we want to focus on is the things. We want to hear 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 the agencies of the republic. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. In the meantime, we want to hear the things. 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 Mr. Speaker. I am the floor leader.
The speaker, we are able to hear the members of the House of Delegates. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the immigration control and reforms. We want to hear the things. 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 Mr. Speaker.
I am the floor leader. Mr. Speaker.
We are able to hear the things. We want 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 to hear the things. Pay attention to the things. We want to hear 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 the things. I am the floor leader.
I am the floor leader. I am the floor leader. I am the floor leader.
I am the speaker. We are able to hear the members of the House of Delegates. The vice speaker, the floor leader. The meeting. I am the floor leader. The legislative agenda. I am the speaker. I want to hear the direction. We want to hear the 12 Olbi Rakhulaw. We want to hear the House legislative agenda. I am the executive branch. I am the senator. We want to hear the priorities. First, legislative agenda. We want to hear economic diversity and growth. We want to hear the resources. Natural resources and environment. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the activities on top of that. We want to hear the resources. We want to hear the things. We want to hear infrastructure development. We want to hear connectivity. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the tourism. We want to hear the independent. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the resources. We want to hear the environmental and climate change. We want to hear the things. We want to emphasize the critical importance of environment and conservation. We want to hear the balance of conservation effort. We want to hear the economic benefit. We want to hear the things. 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 We want to hear the situation. We want to hear the state government's own resources. The government's own tax. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the vision. We want to hear the vision. We want to hear the leaders of the House. We want to hear the legislative agenda. Mr. Speaker.
I am the floor leader. The delegate is going to talk.
Mr. Speaker, we are able to hear the officers, the delegates. The speaker, we want to hear the legislative agenda. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the leaders. We want to hear the things. 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 I am the floor leader.
I am the floor leader. I want to hear the things. We 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 want to hear the things. I am the floor leader. I am the floor leader.
Mr. Speaker. We want to hear the journal calendar. We want to hear for adoption. Third-day journal. First regular session. We want to adapt the journal.
We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. I am the floor leader.
I am the director of the journal. We want to hear the meeting. We want to hear the adoption. Mr. Speaker, we want to hear the presidential communication. Note Number Six. Transmitting Presidential Proclamation Number 25391. It is for Palau Pacific Resort. We want to hear the anniversary. We want to hear the meeting. The two, Transmitting the Title Twenty-seven. We want to hear the commercial fishing. Exclusive economic loan. We want to hear it. We want to hear the six. Departmental communication. We want to hear the congratulatory letter. Honorable Sir Linde Hoiler MP. Speaker of the House of Commons. The speaker. State communication. We want to hear it. We want to hear the number two. Transmitting the 12 Color State Legislature Resolution. 12-45 LD1. We want to hear the transmitter. The Ninth Olbi Ummel Bay Resolution. Number nine dash thirty-four. We want to hear the appropriate part of the calendar. We want to hear it. We want to hear it. We want to hear the Senate communication. We want to hear the report. Standing Committee. For standing committee ways and means. Financial matters. Standing Committee Report Number Twelve - Two. We want to hear the House Joint Resolution. Twelve - Two - One. We want to adapt the committee report.
I want to hear the things. We 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 want to hear the report.
Again, the speaker, we are able to hear the meeting. For the record, the speaker, we want to hear the meeting. Mr. Speaker. The committee of ways and means. The house resolution number twelve - Two - One. Basically, the title. We want to hear the things. We want to hear fifteen million. We want to hear Saudi Fund for Development Organization. The report, the speaker, we want to hear. House Resolution Number Twelve - One. I would like to introduce by request of course the president. The Republic of Palau, Mr. Speaker. It is from November eleven, twenty twenty five. We want to hear the session. We want to hear it. We want to hear the resolution. We want to hear the ways and means and financial matters. We want to hear the report. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. We want to hear Saudi Fund for Development Entity. We want to hear the loan agreement. We want to hear the resolution. We want to hear the loan agreement. We want to hear the general conditions applicable to the loan agreements. We want to hear the procedures. We want to hear the payment. We want to hear the Saudi Fund for Development Loan. We want to hear the provision. We want to hear the National Development Bank with financing. Development programs and projects for the purpose. The purpose of the development. We want to hear the economic and social welfare. We want to hear the specific areas of the Saudi Fund for Development Loan. According to the president, it is transmitted. The speaker. We want to hear the last one. Much-needed capital. We want to hear the residential mortgage and lending for Palau's citizens. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. The speaker, we want to hear the things. 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 We want to hear the president's approval for twenty twenty four. We want to hear the three conditions. We want to hear the last agreement. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the three key provisions. We want to hear the obligations. We want to hear the things. We want to hear confidentiality. We want to hear tax exemptions. We want to hear diplomatic immunity. We want to hear the loan agreement for twenty twenty four. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the president's address. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the things. We want to hear the renegotiation of the SFD loan. Saudi Fund for Development Loan. We want to hear the new agreement. The new agreement has sufficiently been dealt. We want to hear the things. there are three issues specifically. The confidentiality, tax exemptions, and diplomatic immunity. The original loan is not confidential. It is not accepted by an open government act. And it is not allowed. The terms of the 2025 Agreement are not allowed. Because the diplomatic immunity is not allowed. The principles of the diplomatic corps are not allowed. And the SFD loan is not allowed. It is not allowed. And the diplomatic immunity is not allowed. And we are not resolved. The documents are public. We are not allowed to do it. Confidentiality. We are not allowed. Because the agreement is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. And the government open act is not allowed. Because the documents are not allowed. And we are not allowed. And that is the confidential argument. And the dollar is not allowed. The specific clause, Speaker, is not allowed. It is not allowed. The loan agreement is not allowed. Open government act. And the tax exemption. The agreement. The article four is particular covenant. Section four, 400. The borrower is not allowed. Consider the documents, records. Correspondence is not allowed. Provide the fund with complete immunity of the borrowing country regarding the control of inspections of the publications. The speaker says that it is not allowed. Particular covenant. And the section is not applied. These sections shall not apply to any documents and records. They are not applied to documents and records maintained by the government of the Republic of Palau. The article four is not allowed. The article four is not allowed. The extent of the confidentiality is not allowed. The regulations are not allowed. Correspondence is not allowed. The specifications are applied equally to section eight, point zero three. The general conditions. And the general conditions are not allowed. Loan agreement. Before the communication, it is not allowed. SFD loan agreement. The loan agreement is not allowed. The tax exemption is not allowed. The original loan agreement is not allowed. And remove the original tax of 2024. And resolve it. And the provisions of 2024 are under article four. The particular section is under article four. And section four zero six, four point zero six. Move the next page. And the article is not allowed. And article four, SFD loan agreement, article four, particular covenant, section four point zero six. The borrower shall exempt all fund transactions in the borrowing country from all taxes, fees, and other costs of any kind. The issue of the 2024 agreement is not allowed. And the particular covenant, four or six, is not allowed. And we are not allowed. And the contentious issue is diplomatic immunity. And we are not allowed. The original loan agreement is not allowed. It is not allowed. The Saudi Fund for Development. It is not allowed. And the diplomatic corps is not allowed. Because it is not allowed. It is not allowed. The SFD loan agreement no longer extends the privilege of diplomatic immunity to SFD officials. And we are not allowed. The specific clause is not allowed. Article four is not allowed. The concern is not allowed. It is not allowed. Section nine oh one D. The article nine oh one D is the general provisions. And it is not allowed. The general tools referring to the diplomatic immunity shall not apply. The attachment is not allowed. The article nine oh one D says, the borrower shall extend the necessary facilities to the accredited representative of the fund who are charged with assignments related to the loan in the territory of the borrower, and shall accord said representative immunity. And it is not allowed. It is not allowed. And according to 2024, the provisions are not allowed. Four oh one six, section D, nine oh one D. And the conditions are not allowed. And we are not allowed. The speaker says that we are not allowed. And the statement is not allowed. The speaker says that the government is not allowed. And the last one is not allowed. And we are not allowed. The agreement is not allowed. And the last one is not allowed. Because the agreement is not allowed. And it is not allowed. And we are not allowed. The Constitution is not allowed. The resolution is not allowed. Article ten, ten nine, IX. The Constitution is not allowed. It is not allowed. Loan. State of two million. The national loan is not allowed. The President or anybody. NDBP is not allowed. And the provisions are not allowed. The clarification is not allowed. Because the government is not allowed. And the speaker says that the loan agreement is not allowed. And the provisions are not allowed. The law is not allowed. And the term is not allowed. Twenty twenty four. And five years is required. And five years is required. And five years is not allowed. And the five trends are not allowed. The trend one is five million. The upon completion is not allowed. And it is not allowed. The trend three is three million. The trend four is two million. And the last trend is one million. Total is fifteen million. And we have completed the first trend before the process is withdrawn. Loan. The by twenty twenty nine. The project is not allowed. On Monday, the bank is not allowed by twenty twenty nine. The amortization is not allowed by twenty twenty nine. And you have thirty amortization schedule. Five hundred thousand payments annually from thirty payments. And we are not allowed. Twenty forty four is not allowed. And the semi annual payment is not allowed. By annual, it is not allowed. After twenty twenty nine. And we are not allowed. And it is not allowed. Twenty twenty nine is not allowed. And we are not allowed. For this loan to materialize, the project is not allowed. We negotiate another five years. And basically, it is not allowed. And we are not allowed. And the project is not allowed. And we are not allowed. The NDBP is not allowed. And the NDBP is not allowed. So, let the Speaker open the floor.
I am Saula. I will talk to the reporters. And I will open the floor.
I am Saula. The speaker says that the chairman is not allowed. And we are not allowed. And we are not allowed. And we are not allowed. And the government is not allowed. And we are not allowed. And the chairman says that we are not allowed. We are not allowed. We are not allowed. We are not allowed. And we are not allowed. Speaker, we are not allowed. And we are not allowed.
I am Saula. I will open for any delegates.
Yes. Here is the chairman. And I will talk to Saula. I am not allowed. And the question is not allowed. The loan is not allowed. It is residential mortgages. And it is not allowed. And the mortgages are not allowed. And we are not allowed. And the two point five is not allowed. The domestic agreement. The Saudi Fund for Development. And the borrower, which is referred to as the Republic of Palau, is the executive agency, NDBP. So, the based on the proposed agreement, the domestic agreement, the settlement is not allowed. And we are not allowed. And we are not allowed. The Ministry of Finance is designated ministry. And it is not allowed. And we are not allowed. The payment is up to twenty forty four. And we are not allowed. And we are not allowed. Two point five percent. And we are not allowed. And we are not allowed. And residential mortgages are not allowed. Or anything, NDBP is not allowed. And we are 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 not allowed. By the time, we are not allowed. And if it is more than two point five, we are not allowed.
The chairman.
The speaker says that we are not allowed. And we are not allowed. The Saudi Fund for Development. The interest rate is not allowed. And the management costs the loan. And the republic on behalf of NDBP is not allowed. And it is an entity of NDBP. Therefore, the cost of NDBP is not allowed. And if we are not allowed, the capital is not allowed. It is very generalized program. NDBP will dictate that. So, on behalf of NDBP, we are not allowed. And the library to suffer interest rate. And the software interest rate is four point three five. So, we are not allowed. And 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 the loan is not allowed. NDBP is not allowed. And we are not allowed. And we are not allowed. The mortgage is not allowed. And the cost is not allowed. And that is the only way. And that is additional five hundred thousand a year. Presenting the interest is not allowed. And the cost of the bank is not allowed. And the housing project is not allowed. And we are not allowed. The two point five is not allowed. Saudi Fund loan development is not allowed. And the final product is not allowed. And that is determined by the bank. And we are not allowed. So, let the Speaker.
The chairman.
So, the chairman. We are not allowed. And 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 the arbitration process is not allowed. And we are not allowed. The Saudi is not allowed. In any event, the agreement is not allowed. And we are not allowed. Which is not allowed. Not fair. And the limited waiver of sovereign immunity. And we are not allowed. And we have issued. And the loan agreement is not allowed. And the other areas are not allowed. And it is not allowed. And the chairman. And the NDBP and the interest rate are not allowed. And it is not allowed. And we are not allowed. And we are not allowed. And the last time, the NDBP was not part of the agreement. And we are not allowed. And we are not allowed. Especially the vital line. And we are not allowed. And the chairman says that we are not allowed. Agreement for loan agreement for anybody. And we are not allowed. And the schedule payment is not allowed. And we are not allowed. And it is not allowed. And we are 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 not allowed. NDBP must have generated revenue out of the interest of the government. And continue to do it. So, let the Speaker.
I am Saula.
So, the speaker says that the chairman is not allowed. The speaker says that we are not allowed. And the administrative costs are not allowed. And we are not allowed. I'm ready to, administrative cost, I'm ready to, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Like, I'm ready to, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, NDBP, I'm ready to. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. And so you can, I'm ready to.
Mr. Mousawara, I'm ready to, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to.
Speaker, I'm ready to, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. The Cloutal Restate, so you can, motion to adopt, the Standing Committee Report Number 12-2. I'm ready to.
I'm ready to. Come, I'm ready to, I'm ready to.
Speaker, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, Chairman, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, five, three. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. 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 So you can, I'm ready to.
I'm ready to.
Oh, so you can, schedule withdrawal, is upon, I'm ready to, completion, I'm ready to. It's, I'm ready to, 21, less than 5 million, I'm ready to, project, I'm ready to, 22. I'm ready to, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, interest, 15 million. Upon withdrawal, based, I'm ready to, project, I'm ready to, five years. I'm ready to, project one, apply, I'm ready to, complete, I'm ready to, project one, apply, part of application, I'm ready to, 22. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. It's like faces. Complete, face one, apply, face two, Thomas, and that's how the withdrawals is applied. So you can, withdrawal, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. We, interest, I'm ready to. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to, interest, I'm ready to. Based, I'm ready to, 20, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to.
I'm ready to.
Speaker, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Sure, Chairman.
I'm ready to.
Sure, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. A member, committee, to make a request, to be allowed, much of this discussion, I create, so you can, meeting, I give, the, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Timely effort, because, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. The, I'm ready to, time, the Chairman, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Focused review, offer a direction, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. And proceed, I'm ready to, I'm ready to, committee report, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to move forward, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. And I'm ready to, members, much Chairman, or the supporter, I'm ready to, adoption, or the committee report. Thank you.
Sure, come, little man, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to.
Mr. Mousawara, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, Chairman, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Report, really, I'm ready to, Saudi loan. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, diplomatic exemption, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, open government act, confidentiality. And I, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Chairman, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Article 5, section 801, RAB, I'm ready to. The loan agreement shall be free from any tax limit by or in the territory of. I'm, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. The, the, President, Mr. Mousawara, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to. I'm ready to. Diplomatic immunity, I'm ready to, confidentiality, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, Chairman, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Construction materials, employment, I'm ready to, Saudi. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to. And I, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Saudi, Saudi Arabia, I'm ready to, dry countries. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, make sure, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, loan opportunity, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. As we speak, I'm ready to, at least, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to.
I'm ready to, Chairman, I'm ready to. I'm ready to.
Sure, I'm ready to, Chairman, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. The, the loan, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, loan, rolling loan, I'm ready to, housing, I'm ready to, loan will work good. I'm ready to, businesses, I'm ready to, loan, I'm ready to, rolling loan, as we pay, I'm ready to, capital, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to.
Come, Chairman.
Oh, yeah, I'm ready to, NDBP. Focused, NDBP, I'm ready to, residential mortgage, I'm ready to, housing. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Prioritizing, I'm ready to, housing. Planner, I'm ready to. And I'm first, five years, executor, I'm ready to, project, meaning, I'm ready to, housing project, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, five years, I'm ready to, start-up payment planner, and they have the money to do so. I'm ready to, rolling loan, I'm ready to, definition, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, executor, so upon, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. The President, I'm ready to, Saudi, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, provisions, I'm ready to, generalize them. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to. So you can, if you can, dictator, I'm ready to, mortgages, and I'm ready to, housing. So you can. Sure, I'm ready.
Sure, Chairman, I'm ready to, anymore, delegate, I'm ready to.
Speaker, I'm sure, going back to what Vice Speaker said, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, from 1 to 5. I'm ready to, for anybody, I'm ready to, next, I'm ready to, make sure, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, before I release, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, arbitration process, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, representative, Saudi, Republic, I'm ready to, neutral member, I'm ready to, appoint. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Limited waiver of plausible immunity from suit is necessary, if it's necessary in order to effectuate the loan agreement. I'm already, I'm ready to, for anything, I'm ready to, disagree on, I'm ready to, arbitration process. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, arbitration process, in any event, I think, I'm ready to, project, Saudi fund, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I think, anything, from any country, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, Chairman, I'm ready to. And also, it's time, let's not forget, I'm ready to, the five years, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, 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 I'm ready to. Like I said, the, the ending date, I'm ready to, 2044, which is, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Mr. Mousawara, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. This is not just for residential mortgages, there are other programs, NDBP involved, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, additional, that can change the 2.5, the slow, and afford the ball, more, I'm ready to. Sure, I speak.
Mr. Mousawara, I'm ready to.
Sure, I speak. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. 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 I'm ready to, loan, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. But, I'm ready to, NDBP, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, mechanism, I'm ready to. Distributor, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Thank you.
Sure, I'm ready to, I'm ready to.
Mr. Mousawara, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. 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 And I'm ready to, I'm ready to. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to.
So you can, I'm ready to.
Speaker, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. 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 The discussion, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. 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 I'm ready to, Saudi Arabia, I'm ready to. The, Chairman, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, 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 I'm ready to. Here at 2018, Chairman, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. It's world news, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, 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 I'm ready to. And I'm ready to, I'm ready to. What sample, I'm ready to. Almost, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. But, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. So you can, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. 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 Sure, Chairman, I speak.
I'm ready to, Chairman, I'm ready to.
I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Basically, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Real versus dollar, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Select exchange rate, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. The, the, real versus US dollars, change in interest, value, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. The, 56 million, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, 15 million US dollars, at 2.5%. So you can, I'm ready to. Change in value, or US, in moment, I'm ready to. Select exchange rate, changing, changing, I'm ready to. So you can, I'm ready to.
Oh, yeah, Chairman, I'm ready to. I'm sure, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, 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 I'm ready to. Maybe it's not really related to this, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. So you can, Chairman, I'm ready to.
Okay, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. 2.5, actual interest rate, I'm ready to, 15 million, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, actual interest rate, I'm ready to, resolution, I'm ready to. Given that, I'm sure, I'm ready to, change the value, the exchange rate, the real versus US, and still, I'm ready to, lower real, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. Regardless of the exchange rate, I'm ready to, I'm ready to. I'm ready to, I'm ready to. No more than 15 million, I'm ready to, 2.5 interest rate. I'm ready to, international exchange rate, I'm ready to.
I'm Sula, Floridair Akmalungiluldasul Molla. And madangil, the gigeril meklotia i gi del dospe'ra SS number gi den ngarri i gi del different ID cards, whether tal national ID mal uben operators license. Kado mesast identity theft statistics at 2022, Abalura India lead with 27 million cases, Yamari gelangara 13 million cases. Ya average abekkarara igal maqlol belu, ngara 1 million cases ra gi gi del marora identity ra arath. Malakadasamakli tian diregal sebe'edel maralmeel me effect rigida arathar belau. Gi tial masala sa cyber security statistics, akuk inigaito se ngarat, erultela el cyber attacks abekal seals, abalula adan meli wekla. Ya gi del diregal last year, kado madangila sa MOF, man diregal tene breach a security rti. Gi tial masala ra ospital, se mle frisa system, tangarama newa la system ra elang. So mal supporter tial uldasul molla espigir, la ngosu gi drega i gi del security risk, togunitogora identity theft, tel sel marora license rigida, or quridi, and si irango dalad access i gi del personal information, and then access a financial account rigida, malmuthal bevir a personal information, ilgi da dakan swadal al ngay arathel uspe'. Tial SS number gi da sensribil informel piece of information, el identity rigida. Kado uspe'ingil protecta privacy, so sa gi del protecta, diregal protecta fraud prevention. Gi den madangai ngara diregal two years ago, ta diregal dilura bank accounts ra ngar, ngara abalura marigel withdrawal. So I know tiangal lakadat ma client sel muthal mabetokar arathadal ngar belau, malubetangari care belal, sel tokuni gi da arathal ngar belal, sel dal affected by this. So tokora security, makmaldi otia supporter ngara, al mortel uldasul molla espige, yamso la tial.
Sula, delegat ngiru, ngar lo?
Ulda sa imaga Sebastian Akmosenke, maktimogdeb. Speaker, tial SS amal, this is a private information. Kado mal offended sel deborawabla bulis, edo lula license rigida, dongida kamessa sa security number gau. Le ngara, ngara makumskasa sa security number ngar. Mmm, tumi ngaral na mogira de chensi ringi. Ndakamutamala de chensi ringi, bukholbongi sel privacy ra arathma, alwa social security, ngaka oldubertia. Eh, merko de senkeo, senkeo, malmubet senkeo, mlamomreka umsala.
Sen, oh, sen moxion ra, lo ngi seconded paya Marino, man tirge rogul wangin da pasa pasar tial bill ra first reading el du hoy? Kadi agom toom, la passe se asan mora cheychey agamiti chair by delegate Kiibons. Floridair?
Mal molme speaker morselo ngi rule bill in ngara first reading calendar, mega motional pass, ra house bill number 12-8-1. Only three seconds.
Speaker, se gi da, namakatmakla moxion ma clear, kandakomkiwa title ra.
House bill number 12-8-1. Tial uldasul molla amomlo da ra title 27, al mugilungi sel permitted fishing area ra al sel exclusive economic zone. Emomakta be'ya moratorium el murap permitting ra commercial fishing vessel, mora besel applicants. Emo del signater national port ra al sel angat pang, makukte bevirango dolomsodil. Tial uldasul molla able introduce tial atanga kol president rabalur belau, Surang Louis Jr.
Se gi da title ra ya bill namui ma, se diregal moswe, a reference ringi, and se gi del president communication number seven, okro, ma i guess a reference in more tial first reading. Eh, ulala open for anybody, so mo ulgi del tial. Ah, la, ah, gabonge ngar lo?
Speaker, tiangwa malokro, klemal, wa di giat emedmedida senkeo, emba se aningil more appropriate committee.
Ilan moxion?
Sí.
Se gi del blal moxion ringi ngar lo, ngi sen by everybody ma, tirge rogul wangin da pasa tial first reading el du hoy? Omto, la pasa first reading asan mora ways and means, ma MCC NPA, chair by delegate Marino. El tobloel gamitia mawurur tian, ya reporting gamitia ways and means, oratoora, au do, egi deklugamitia, ways and means, ma MCC NPA. Eh, Floridair?
Mal molme speaker morselo ngi day, in ngara first reading calendar rigida, mega motional pass, ra house bill number 12-9-1.
Se gi da, clear, muiya title.
House bill number 12-9-1. Tial uldasul molla amomlo da ra title 22, Rapala National Code, ilmo atiast ra urior, mangara alal girela prepayment, mangarelela recipient ra loan, grant, maluben scholarship. Ediregal ma authorize Rapala National Scholarship Board, matomol ngase ra university, maluben podi graduate student, ilmla return ilmosta be'ya lourior ra i gel urior, el tirangila schoolir ringi, makukte bevirango dolomsodil. Tial uldasul molla able introduce tial delegate yutaka Kiibons Jr., maruptoysel delegates.
Se gi na mui, madidopsa tial la introduce her, main introduce her, delegate Kiibons, prokadi mo.
Ula ngi speaker, dasa se gi da title ringi amal blakatakle speaker. Ah, gi da, gi da malasmal, gada, gada, gada rulit, tial mo, mo helper ngalra school, tir'a, ki ga gi del ngalgetel, tilo del mo ikrel belal, mo mla higher education rti. Mongo helper tim, ndakachal mal mosuwe baka rangri ra i gel guk, application rti, ilgiril peibaga udo'ud rti ra manle blakarangri, lourior, ngaschool, eh, eh, earn, ta manle earn ai gel udo'ud, eh, ulm, ilngar ascool ra ikrel belau. Mong, sebril focus, alilakla rangri, mo utuswir, focus el mla classes rti. Ndakal del ti, diregal i ga, diregal mo helper, atablirir, ndakachal mal mombrin apterira, eh, ga gi del tokora scholarship, ma, ma grant. Mong, kada, eh, eh, diregal obengel se, se gi del, eh, gi da madangila sing malmbrin la, ah, arngalget, sel to da school, emerbelau, ma kotel mering la, labetika urerir. Ma ol mangar se gi del title, kado diregal ngarisel ya Palau Scholarship Board, debolo urior lobengela, se gi del taro bis rigida belau. El helper tirgal ngalgal, lo mesai gel guk skills rti, ma i gel education rti, ma i gel ogul background rti, eh, lo mesai gel appropriate telo kora urerir, eh, el helper ti, mo i gel lourior, se gi da kora uldasu. Kada, kado motigingil wase, speaker, emral tokoi gi da bigosangda ka university rigida, edo maloldubar arngalgetel ma higher education, man tirga dictaro lela toda, toda ikrel belau, el mo mla schoolir. Mong, eh, seluwa se gi de tirga diregal mo uspe'aa au do'ud, te, te mo, te mo mla rawa loan, ma grant, ma scholarship, el helper ti, mo mla schoolir. Mong, kada, tial, kada, malom tingil wase, te gi del title 22, Rapala National Code, tial scholarship board, da, angar alil, tirangar alil process, ra eligiblei tirangalga, il tiramo apply ga gi deli, grant, ma loan, ma scholarship, il mostadi, mo mosuwe ikrel belau. Ya, te gi del PNSB, man diregal ngar alil, el mo monitor tir ga i del ngalga, el old way. Sel boraschool, eto monitor ti, il molmol either te, te, degal fini, se mo, eh, mlo dagal bolmerik raschool, malubet te mo merik raschool, ngar alil monitor ti ga i del ngalga. Edo diregal mlo, motigingil wase, tial, te gi del current law, penalize, penalizes a loan gra, loan, ma grant, maluben scholarship recipients, el tirafel, el return el merbelau, el me urior, after completion raschool. Et te gi del penalty, ah, ilgiril peibaga 50% ra loan, ma grant, ma scholarship. Mong, sebogul wase, tial, igal tril, or a source ra au do'ud, ah, di, di, di osisiu, ngar ngalga, they just, they have to, they have to pay it back, achumandakal be'belau. Mong, kada, ada olbil, ah, de gal disagree, I mean, kada, kada, kada wangir, uldasul wase, alone, of course alone, they have to pay it back, after they finish school, and they have to, ndi alla re la anga wase, they have to pay back, se gi del 50% ra loan, scholarship, ma, oh, ah, se gi del 50% ra loan, el receivingi. Kada, by disagree, il wase, kada hole, ra osisiu standard of repayment, tel mora ngalga tirapera grant, ma scholarship. Mong, ar ngalgra school, ah, receive ra grant, ma scholarship, amle earn, ra award, by meeting certain criteria. Ti ga blakarangri ngaschool, eh, mla high grade, eh, mosuwe il eligible, el mla ra i gi del grant, ma scholarship. Mong, kada, kada diregal, ndakal del se gi del high grades, ma i ga gi del other, i ga gi del other extraordinary academic achievements rti, unusibil ma i gel ngesu. Kada, diregal motigingil wase, imposing, te gi del requirement, tel mora peibaga grant, ma scholarship, ah, atomali sel, uldasu wase, kada incentivize ra ngalga, el tirawork hard, achieve, at upgrades. Mong kada, olbir akululaw, kada, diregal motigal wase, tial current la, diregal mandate ra ngalga, te return, te, two years after a graduation, eh, graduating, ilgiril, a recipient ra loan, ma grant, ma scholarship, ah, either non priority, mal, maluben priority, they have to return, eh, ga gi da tetel, a non priority, a 1.5 years, el, lourior alsel belau, year after. Ya, priority ama 2.5, 2.5 years. Ndikdo, ndi, ndikdo emral waseng, tial, kada, al toda school, whether it was a priority field, non priority field, ndi ilgiril, ilgiril sel return el merbelau, and dimo, ndi, ndi tausun, ndi, it's, it's the same, len, gi da abalua dakotel gagerai, eh, we're still a developing country. Mal priority, man priority, omo si siu le, we're still building our, our nation. Mong, ilgiril waseng, kada, tial standard, ah, kada di waseng, te di return ngalga, tirgal apla loan, tirgal ngila loan, el del, after graduation, eh, el return el merbelau, mandakadu waseng, ngara priority, man, ma priority, eh, eh, different years ra, am surbe ringi, alsel belau, ndimo si siu, you return to Palau, and then you work for certain number of years. Ma, olbir akululaw, ah, propose, Mr. Speaker, wase, kada, amenda se gi del title 22, eliminate se gi del ambiguous statutory language, el mo clarify ra urior, ma repayment, eh, ga gi del requirements, a recipients of loan, grant, ma scholarship. Ma, diregal mo require a panel of national scholarship board, demo provide, provide se gi del lungil, maluben concrete, eh, career support, el morti ga i del students rti, ah, no, return el merbelau, el me urior. Nati ga gi da amendment, el mortian, sel title 22, ah, 227, under sel powers and duties. Board sel page 3, kada dimo insert the se gi del ay, line 7. Wase, the board, ma bureau of public services system, board, meaning, Palau Scholarship Board, ma bureau of public service system, ah, shall assist a graduate that receives loan, scholarship, ma grant, with job search strategies, eh, advise, and mo assist with finding employment, alsel abalur belau. Maselokupongeru nga, se gi del ngara, under 233, duties of loan, grant, or scholarship recipients. Kada, se gi de gi da, mlo, kada tacli, kada dimo, mlos tryout, ta i ga gi del wa scholarship, ma grant, mong dimo loan, ngalga dimo peibaga 50% te se gi del loan rti ra mla ringi, after they finish a, a school. Di, te gi del waseng, ndi ilgiril two years, selbomre, in two years, ebuidi two years, emlamo, oh, ilgiril, reimburse, sel start to reimburse, se gi del, loan al, al ngelai. Ma, at the same time, either that, or ta, ta be'belau, urior for, for five years. Sel urior for five years, eh, instead of paying back, eto dimo, eto dimo away by ga gi del 50% ra loan al ngelai. Masel depora, sel ku page 4. Oh, eh, ga gi da, gi da, basically, kada malas tryout, ta i ga gi del, eh, ga gi del kwa, different years, ama, number of years i gel, whether it was priority or non priority, eh, ga gi de blal a tryout. Eh, eh, insert the se gi del base language, il wase, recipients of grant or scholarship, ah, de gal require return to belau, or work in belau. Nor are they to be held level to reimburse the Republic for grant, maluben scholarship awards. Mong, se gi, mal blakatakle, speaker, ma delegates, and, kada, the idea is, kada, gi da, kada, mla besra, mohtegra scholarship, ma grant, ma olmati al uldasul molla, ah, magataklise, mong, tobula, tomral, obular ngalget, ah, gi damdangai, eh, gi de toko blato sa. Tangara school, eh, di gikravakara uldasu, wase, ID sel igal scholarship bladangai, ma grant, ma loan, na do, dakta, tril badangal, au do'udel ngelai, eh, bolom naso, ah, paid back, eh, gi damdangai waseng, gi da, ngarelela olbil, ngarelela olbil, wasi, ga i ga gi del uldo'udel incentivize ra ngalgal, tirabla kari ngaschool. Whether, ndakal polchensi, kala wase, kama ngar belau, malubet ngar ikrel belau, mo dagam other belakka. Wherever you are, eh, skill ngelgel bela, other, other mental bela, helper gaul, achieve by either gauler gaur, sel swamel, kutmakliar, chaq, ngar gaul. Mong, se gi, ndi, understanding ngar loan, na di blatakla, ilgiril return rti. Mong, tia, blat, letal de introduce ringi, in, mlo sel bitang, matulurior ngi, nding, mlo ra conference, eh, timra conference, eh, mlo alilakla, hopefully, eh, this time around, eh, sebedel mesas se gi del, ringalela, stress ra ngalga, mar parents, ilgiri, eh, ga gi del scholarship, tiramal blakarangri lourol gi. Len, gi damdangai, se gi del scholarship office, eh, tiral ngalga, dakasiu, ditmul, di automatic tangascholarship. Eh, ya, di do, tangalira, tangaschool, eh, tamigagrel meelmeelme. Mong, se gi, kada, kada helper ngalga, so they can stay focused, and concentrate ra, akuk ngar alil, il achieve ra, akuk, eh, gele academic goals. Se gi da kadi uldasu, speaker, eh, holita supporter abekla ad.
Sula, senel kora, umsodil tial uldasul molla, lala, openan mora anybody, gabonge ngiwa?
Speaker, malmsula introduce her, speaker, eh, tanga mal, malungila timing ringi, in fact, eh, taktilgibil kora namo behind ra, len, ilgiril lure ed ringi. Ah, eh, gel olgoya malklembarang, tia ga, by bestel, ngaka malde olnitra, mobengela, introduce speaker olnitra, pasaiset tial la, el borafusti, or agamitir gabe, we, domis ringi. Best information, speaker, el, arinyaa malpito ngalgetel ngara west coast, ngara middle mainland USA. Enamo face a problem tir gel ngara two years, two, three years, el, tir gel ngalgetel, lungila teng rti ra, sel ilgan tinnyul, mla loan, emla rti a scholarship. Eh, that's 2.5 up, I think. Tir gel mla asima dil bilor, se, nding it's a passing grave. Amo de gal lungi a scholarship, ma tomo face a pel grant. Emorongon ya marigel, na implement ra, dahudens, speaker, gi damlamo, ngara ogde madri ragra, akupodo hoy, da raschool. Ndita namo, eh, pel grant, is still going on, speaker, tanamo, tanamo questiona earning ra parents. Ma, eh, akora wale, earning or SS ra parents rti. Tir gal ngalga, dimo, al quit raschool, eh, mosi ra adri, eh, alubet te mo urior, el mo dakal si il ngara marigela, chastify earning ra, ah, arathmal, ma mamiringil, ngara belau, ma, se gi da mana, mong, yo, tial, tanga mal, raita timing ringi, lulu swela, atakal, delegates, rasonso, speaker, ngaka malde onti, wase, mevul sela, danglalawal, goongeri, by elbor appropriate committee, edalo utel mal, ma lungil, smodi, speaker. Se gi da malde onti, speaker, mal supporter tial la, ulan.
Sula, ngiwa, abliliyo?
Speaker, ngama di tu, gari gal mora, introduce her, eh, niso abol blakatakl, ma kotel gari ga kuaset, tial, scholarship, sel dungu, tial ngalgetel mora school. Emo dakal hara, olmerika, ndakal hara ringi, eh, ongeru, eh, eh, chairman, na, gari ga kuaset, masel dukta borse, se gi del, ah, mora higher education rigida, mbozosi, il, mli si'ra, a master program, ma doctorate, eh, kada mla ra loani, eh, loan abadharaw ringi, ma, masel gora onti, wase, muzum, aharar ra loani, eh, wumsigia incentive, el morse, se gi del loan, at least a ball half, leting tiang, ah, 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 tinnyolela, angalgel belau, esmisia, abalur belau, el momsisi, eh, mlo msa'ngurra, amzadeltan, sula ngi, eh, soh, introduce a chairman.
Gabo, Marino, delegate Marino. Kamotu daro, desu, na ba?
Speaker, eh, trakl, delegate rabilokoram narinya, gari, lesuwa la clarification, ra introduce her, aulmakoramlo, ngalomberi.
Se dimle, se dimle, gama deyshon ringi, wase, po mosi ka ogdu, del morti, tir gel, mla raschool.
Alright, sula ngi, speaker, ati al, speaker, akmalul mul oldubra intent, tial uldasu, len, for good reason, ra ngalget, eh, kora malungil complimentary, mor sel, kuq, ah, ah, kuq sel negotiation, president, under tial a compact term rigida, el ngalger belau, woraschool, marigel, alub, ilgi del state, marigel, et, eligible, el mora in-state tuition. A in-state tuition, akuk pay way, way lower than out, out-of-state tuition, you know, kora malungil, ngesu, el mora ngalget. Ngaka mal, di, ngarinya one, il question, ma clarification, rti al uldasu, len, soh, al di clarify ringi, bo, bo, understand ringi. Ngarinya sel line 220, ra page 3, el mal cleared, wase, a recipients of a loan, shall be required to return to Palau and work in the Republic of Palau for five years. Eh, commencing no more than two years after graduating from an, ah, from an undergrads or postgraduate degree program, that's, that singular program. Belangak question, ngaka, ngaka, tir se gi da say, omgu mangalga tilo, dr, ah, school, emna ngwa, master degree. Eh, because ngarinya interested in pursue, ra PhD program ringi, a PhD, amo dengalil, more than two years program. For that reason, ngal, ngal, mal, mal, pursue, ah, I mean, doctor program ringi, eh, after two years, kada, ma, mal, mal, masa obligation, ringil pay off ra loan, while still pursuing education, that's the question. Now, mor, mor gaditi la gi del, ngir gaya chair, eh, soh, a clarification. Beladol mol, eh, sel, ali te gi dam sao, ra repayment, ra, loan, ra line 26, wase, a loan recipients, shall be required to reimburse the Republic of Palau 50% of the total amount of loan, received with interest for failing to comply with section, subsection B, se gi del, ulmu, ulmu ringi. Tial laboral, page 4, ra line 9, enku, ngoda, osengekaringi, mong, se gi da uspe'ak clarification. Recipient of a grant or scholarship is not required to return to Palau, and not required to work in the Republic of Palau, nor are they to be liable to reimburse the Republic of Palau for grant or scholarship award. Clarification. Mong, se gi da uspe'ak clarification, eh, bo, bo, lungil sao di, eh, agumoy ringi, kora mo confusing, aulum, the clarification, the chairman, sula.
Sula ngi, speaker, ngarungo, kora chairman ra, agamiti, mlamu, kutmru tial eh, i ga, nding, haledik tra eh. Sula ngi, delegate ra to'opi, mm, nguwa se, el altai, nding, se gi del kantserer gawa, ra tokora, doctorate degree, se, it's, it's a concern, i ga, se, agamiti bolomese, eh, kuq bolomese, se gi de, maral elaborator na wale. Ah, sel guk, sel ongeru nga, wase, sel la'rela. Mmm, loan, they have to, eh, pay baga, se gi del 50% ra loan, alolari, se, se la'rela. Oh, ndi, eh, ye, di deble, da stragalt, ta gela, on, kada wase, kada stragalt, ta gela wa grant, ma scholarship, ndakal parta, se, ndimo longun. Le, eh, ye, di, osisiu, alanguichan ringi. Eh, sel obor, se gi del ongerai, se, kuq different, eh, se gi da gi da, mal magatakli, wase, a grant, ma scholarship, dakal bo peibaga ringi. Intu kagrosa to'oi. Se gi de, speaker, eh, mal, kora agamiti, mlu nila, delegate, lo meser ngi, improve.
Gabo, ngar lo?
Speaker, tiangala kotlom ngiwele, emral guk ngarinya, gel akansur, ra, donporsu bela, no'te, eh, malkol, kora agamiti, kada, diregal kotlom ngiwele, blakatakl, waseng, ki da, ti gaso, da ngalgar belau, ah, ban, bo return el hara wa, tokora scholarship, ma, ngarinya i gel, law, da great, sel tiragiril meet in order for them to be eligible. Med, closer discussion, edo movringil, mora senkeo, edo bo, da, kora agamiti.
La seconded, a moxion, too closer, a discussion, edo senkeo, tirge rogul wangin da pasa tial first reading el du hoy? Ri lo'to, la ma'ay, tia asan, mora, eh, EYSA, Chair by delegate Roimay, Education, sel Floridair?
Mal molme, speaker, tia ga, ngara, second reading, sel bill calendar rigida. Oh, number four, mosuwe. Mmm, house bill number 12-10-1, mega motional passer tial ra first reading.
Moxion, clear, am iwa title.
House bill number 12-10-1. Tial uldasul molla amomlo da ra title 35, Rapala National Code, ilmo restore a cleese, el isyu anatis, ra filing, ra claim, ma manumentation, mora land registration officers, makukte bevirango dolomsodil. Tial uldasul molla able introduce tial speaker Gibson Kanayo.
Eh, se gi del mla, di, uaiso, sel, mo meser sel misilinis communication number seven, eh, se, ah, smodi, kei gi del bill bladot, adal to'der ringi, first reading ma. Ah, koro, umdasu, wase, ra arathel, lo meser se gi, wal magatatalon trir, eh, wal mla se del oradi. Mong, simply, ol nitra, gi, briga medembe gi, wase, chenser sel molula, korsu pirara, LRO, tir gel land register, eh, tir gel, eh, registera'ut. El mosuwe, len, arinya, authority to issue notice, marwa filing ra claim, marwa manumentation. El altai, men, sel cleese, adingara Bureau of Land and Survey. Ma, kada, emle, risipra, pa, pirara, orten bela, wase, memutan, la mederim, bolongi, a cleese, tir gel LRO, el risipra claims. Mong, kora di uldasu, se oradi, eh, se gi del, misis, ah, commission number seven, se, ah, smodi, ah, kei de uldasu. Misere oradi, umsodil, se, ulala, lamorga, abliliyo.
Sula ngi, speaker, eh, adomiset tial bill, eh, tiangamral, long overdu. Speaker, akmulva isel, eh, gamam, ah, kirkuk famili, gamam, gamam la experience, eh, tiang, agimal betok, esal. Et ti adimla, amral, eh, igal, igal, kloraro, emlamomre, igal tokoraro, a utu mangaran. Al uba koragort, eh, tokasen, ndirka girem, el mo klee, ndindasil, sendanatis, ah, LRO. Mga, gamral, msula, li, tiang, ah, bay dor edel, kutmakli, eh, do'te bedi, len, al maqol, arathmal, arinyaa, mal madangai, aldoo, ma bekal tetel, ah, tokora, blay, ma, aklaragabli, ilmaklan, eh, di, nagaidiri, eh, tiangalutel, dongin ilmo, el magateketa, eh, eh, tu.
... The delegate's decision is not taken without the consent of the government. The government has to coordinate the efforts within our state. The next delegation is not allowed. The government is not allowed to do anything. That's okay. As long as the energy is controlled, the impact on climate change, my resources, the governors, tap into the military, and the government will take the climate change action. That's all, sir.
Mr. Speaker, I'm sure that Marina has been involved in a lot of things. We have heard that she is a leader of the House of Delegates, and she is responsible for the energy union project management. She is responsible for the energy union project management. She is responsible for the energy union project management.
Speaker, it is a matter of fact that we have received a call from the President about the 100 dollars of the House of Representatives. The delegate has already mentioned it. The Speaker is very passionate about the energy union project management. He has clearly presented his opinion. The government has discussed the climate change issue. And then we have undocumented foreigners. I am sure that Marina has been involved in a lot of things. The Speaker is responsible for the hospital. He has been involved in a lot of things. That's all, sir.
Mr. Speaker, that's all.
I'm sure that you will agree.
Speaker, I'm sure that Marina has been involved in a lot of things. I'm sure that the lobbyists for the climate change are responsible for the financial affairs. They are responsible for the project management. They are responsible for the energy union project management. They have already mentioned it. She is responsible for the state governors. They are responsible for lobbying and access to the government. She is responsible for the government. The President is responsible for the financial affairs. They are responsible for the financial affairs. I'm sure that she is a priority. She is responsible for the President and the government. She has been responsible for the energy union project management. She has been responsible for the energy union project management. The lobbyists are responsible for the energy union project management. They are responsible for the energy union project management. They are responsible for the financial affairs. They are responsible for the financial affairs. For anybody who is responsible for the financial affairs, they are responsible for the climate change. They are responsible for the energy union project management. They are responsible for the energy union project management. They are responsible for the money, the government, and other things. For anybody who is responsible for the money, they are responsible for anywhere else. That's all, Speaker.
Mr. Speaker?
That's all, Speaker. I'm sure that the delegates have agreed to the decision. The 8000 executives, Executive Branches, have already agreed. They have agreed to the decision. We have introduced them to each other. We have seen them in the government. We have seen them in the government. We have seen them in the government. The government is responsible for the internal affairs. That's all, sir.
Sir, last time, the next time, I'm sure that you will agree.
Speaker, I'm sure that the Speaker, the next time. I'm responsible for the President of the Interior. On the day of the President's presidency, I was responsible for the State Department of Agriculture. I was responsible for the State Department of Agriculture. The State Government did not give the government any money. The page 3 of the House Bill 12-2-1. It includes the domestic functions of the Interior. In Section 6 of the Page 3 of the House Bill 12-2-1, it includes the domestic and administrative affairs of the Interior. The Speaker is responsible for the State Department of State. It includes the relations between the national and state governments. The functions of the Ministry of Agriculture are responsible for the State Department. The concerns are that the Ministry of State is responsible for the country.
That's all, Speaker.
That's all, Speaker. I'm sure that the delegates have agreed. The delegates have agreed. I'm sure that they have clarified their concern. They have agreed. In one sentence, the functions of the State Department of State, subsection 1 of 4, of the Page 3, subsection 1 to 1. The section 1 of 4, as it is written here, it includes the following: followed by the subsequent line. The section 1 of 4, as it is now, it includes A and B, and that. Explain the following: and anything that comes after. Anything that follows in this section. The following: indicated, it follows, are still there. In Section 121, it includes the functions of the Ministry of Interior within the context. It includes the Ministry of State. I'm sure that the amendments have been approved. That's all, Speaker. And as with all legislation, the regulations are required. The amendments, as I said in earlier readings, the consultation with the President, the clarification of the intention, the amendments are required. As I said, the amendments are required. The law is reflected in the legal form. That's all, Speaker. That's all, Speaker.
Mr. Speaker?
That's all, Speaker. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. The Speaker is responsible for the environment, the climate change. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. That's all.
Mr. Speaker, I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. Marina has been responsible for the energy union project management. I'm sure that you will agree.
Speaker, the next time, I'm sure that you will agree. We have discussed the energy union project management. We have discussed the energy union project management. That's all, Speaker.
I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management.
Speaker, I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. That's all.
I'm sure that you will agree.
Speaker? The delegates have agreed. They have agreed to the climate change. They are responsible for the energy union project management. They are responsible for the energy union project management. They are responsible for the energy union project management.
I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management. That's all, sir.
That's all, Speaker. I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management.
I'm sure that the Speaker is responsible for the energy union project management.
Delegate Jay Blesso Adorko Roy. Delegate Yutaka Gibbons Jr.
Oi.
Vice Speaker Mario S. Colibert.
Oi.
Delegate Noah Kamson. Delegate Portia France Cosole. Delegate Sebastian R. Marino.
Yes.
Delegate Elender Ngiram Kati.
Oi.
Delegate Stephanie Ngiroy May.
Oi.
Delegate Rebecca S. Ngirma Aet. Delegate Francisca R. Otto.
Oi.
Delegate Mongur W. Alul.
Oi.
Delegate Timothy Sinzak.
No.
Delegate Nays N. Swalaply.
Yes.
Delegate Silveryous O. Talley.
Yes.
Floor Leader Warren S. Umetaro.
Oi.
Delegate Portia France Cosole.
No.
Speaker Gibson Kanai.
Oi.
Mr. Speaker, the House Bill 12-2-1, 181. Ador Tin Elies Matullo.
In the next session, I'll talk to the floor. I'll talk to the floor. The floor leader.
The floor speaker, the resolution calendar of the committee of referral. Energy Council Resolution Number 12-3-1.
The floor leader has agreed to the resolution. That's all, Speaker.
House Change Resolution Number 12-3-1. The House Change Resolution number 100, that Donald J. Trump, President of the United States, has agreed. And also congratulation to Donald Trump. And the reelection of President Trump has been approved. Non-consecutive term. The assurance of the support of regional peace and security in the Pacific region. The leadership of President Donald Trump. The resolution will introduce the delegate Rebecca Sebald Ngirma Aet.
The resolution will assign the Foreign Affairs Committee to the Speaker. The floor leader.
Energy Council Resolution, the referral number 12-7-1.
The floor leader has agreed to the referral. Yeah. We are not assigned.
House Resolution Number 12-7-1. The House Resolution number 100, the rules and procedures of the House of Delegates, 12, will be approved. The House of Delegates Committee expense policy, the House of Delegates travel policy, the procedures. The resolution will introduce the Speaker Gibson Kanai.
In the next session, the rules will be included. The travel policy, the procedures. We will discuss these. We will assign the tourism and transportation committee to the committee of tourism. We will assign the reporting committee to the committee of reporting. And we will discuss these. The floor leader.
The floor speaker, the adoption calendar of the resolution. Mega motion to adopt the House Joint Resolution Number 12-2-1.
The next session, the floor.
House Change Resolution Number 12-2-1. The House Change Resolution number 100, President Trump. Although the Saudi Arabian 250,000. The 3 million will be approved. The Saudi Fund will develop. The House Change Resolution will introduce the Speaker Gibson Kanai by request.
In the next session, we will adopt the reporting committee. We will discuss the energy union project management. The 12-2-1 resolution will be approved. The resolution, the floor leader. Agenda item 14, the measures to be implemented. The miscellaneous communications, petitions, memorials and communication. 15, SLA, to move the agenda. In the earlier part of the calendar, please take note, number 7. Supreme Court, Republic of Palau, Land Court Annual Report. Number 8, Micronation Legal Services Corp., request supplemental budget allocation. Miscellaneous Communication, number 9. Palau Housing Authority, the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Request. Number 10, Palau Public Utilities Corporation, to allow information, allow income subsidy.
The floor leader has agreed to item 16. Miscellaneous communication, number 8, to provide legal services. The delegates have agreed. We will assign the committee to the committee. We will discuss these. The Palau Housing Authority, the request to be approved. We will assign the committee to the committee. We will discuss these. 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 The floor leader.
The miscellaneous business, Speaker, Agenda item 16.
In the next session, the next time, Chairman Marino.
That's all, Speaker. I'm sure that the Speaker has agreed. I'm sure that the Speaker has agreed. I'm sure that the Speaker has agreed. I invite impressive people to the PIDB. I invite reporters to the report. That's all, Speaker. I'm sure that the members will agree. The contribution of the Bank of Saudi Arabia, 10 years old. The contribution of the Bank of Saudi Arabia. The Saudi Arabian loan, 15 million. The PIDB, which will be tapped into. The housing program. I'm sure that the contribution of the Bank of Saudi Arabia will be checked. The ARI application of the development. The PIDB. I'm sure that the ARI application of the development. I'm sure that the ARI application of the development. I'm sure that the ARI application of the development. I'm sure that the ARI application of the development. The agencies will be able to use it. That's all, Speaker.
That's all, Speaker.
That's all, Speaker, the next time. I'm sure that the members will agree. 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 Speaker, I want to point out that two weeks ago, the last session, the chairman of the committee of the leadership of the Party, he was not present in the northern area. I'm sure that the delegates, Sinzak, were present in the state. The governor, Abay, the Speaker Abraham, the members of the Party. They were present in the projects. They were present in the fishing area. They were present in the lake. They were present in the middle. They were investigating. They were investigating the state government. The projects were presented. They were presented. They were presented. The priorities were prioritized. The projects were prioritized. The immediate projects were prioritized. I'm sure that the delegates, the leadership of the United States, they visited, sight visited, lunch. The delegates, especially, blah blah. I'm sure that the delegates, Sinzak, the governor, Abay, the Speaker Abraham, the members of the Party, released the projects. They were presented. They were looking forward to the project visits. I'm sure that the delegates, that's all, Speaker, the next time.
That's all, Speaker.
Speaker, I'm sure that the delegates have agreed. The government, the House of Delegates, have agreed. They have agreed. I'm sure that the committee will agree. I'm sure that the committee will agree. I'm sure that the committee will agree. The ARI application of the Saudi Arabian. I'm sure that the delegates have agreed. I'm sure that the delegates have agreed. Until 1995. I'm sure that the delegates have agreed. 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 I'm sure that the delegates have agreed.
That's all, Speaker. I'm sure that the delegates have agreed.
Speaker, I'm sure that the delegates have agreed. The delegates, the members of the Party. We have discussed the energy union project management. I'm sure that the delegates, the Speaker, have agreed. I'm sure that the delegates have agreed. I'm sure that the delegates have agreed. The former government, the Speaker, has been responsible for the climate change. I'm sure that the former government, the committee of the energy union project management. I'm sure that the delegates have agreed. 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 The delegate will... Mr. Speaker. He said that he will not.
I have the report.
I think that the delegates will... I think that the resolution will be approved. The delegates will be approved. I congratulate Trump. The delegates will... They will have priority. The government will... I think that Trump will... Drill, drill. We will say that we will not use oil. We will not use oil. At the moment, I am not sure. I think that we will open. Even though we are aware of the climate change. We will do it. We will approve the climate change. And we will approve the... I think that the others will... I think that the others will...
I have the report. The delegates will be approved.
Mr. Speaker. After introducing the... The... We will approve the... The... We will approve the... The... Since we have approved it. We will say that we will approve it. We will say that we will approve it. The delegate, Marino, will say that we will check. We will freeze it. Since we have approved Trump. He will approve it in 2019. He will release the funds in 2010. We will say that we will approve it. We will not approve it. Since we have approved it. We will not remember. Since we have approved it. In 2021. He invited the president of the state, including the president. We will not approve it. He will not invite anyone else in the group except him. We will say that he will approve it. And then he will remind us. We will say that he will approve it. As long as it is approved. At the meeting. The president will conduct it. He will say that he will approve it. He will say that he will present it to the president. That is why he will not approve it. The president will say that he will approve it. As long as it is approved. I think that the president will approve it. Mr. Speaker.
I have the report. The... I think that the committee will approve it. We will approve it. Mr. Speaker. But at the moment, I think that the delegates will approve it. We will say that the legal service is substantial. We will say that the legal service is substantial. We will say that the financial assistance. We will say that we will approve it. The committee will approve it. Since we have approved the housing. We will approve it. The housing is expanded. The 11-37 million, 500,000. The housing project. We will say that we will approve it. The renovations. I think that we will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. I think that the program will be approved. Since we have approved the 262,000. The services. The bank. I think that it is approved. I think that it is half of the loan. I think that it is half of the total. 525,000 a year. I think that it is half. We will say that we have approved it. I think that we have approved it. 500,000 a year. Additional funding will be approved. In addition, the housing project will be approved. I think that the committee will approve it. The committee will approve it. The last communication. I think that the CEO Frank Jota will... He will accept it. We will say that we will approve it. The chairman of the committee. We will send an email. We will say that we are aware. The committee is aware. Since we have approved it. The committee will approve it. We have approved the 39,000 per month. We have approved the low income. The benefit. I think that we will approve it. It will be approved in December. Since we have approved the 950,000. By March. We will approve it. The key points. CEO. The committee is aware of it. FY 2022. The low-income families receive the subsidy. 620 customers. The total amount is approved. 10,000 per month. FY 2023. I think that the low-income families have 878. The subsidy is 25,000 per month. It is an increase of 258. Low-income families. The demographic. Low-income qualifications. The economy is low. The salary is changed. The tax return. The low income threshold. I think that the CEO will approve it. I think that the committee will approve it. Since FY 2024. By 122. 35,000 per month. 1,000 customers. Every year, we will increase low-income families. The demographic is improving. That is a very important comment. CEO. FY 2025. We have 1,038 customers. It is 39,000 a month. It is an increase of 38. 418 households. We have 88 low-income families. I think that the committee will approve it. I think that the committee will approve it. I think that the committee will approve it. The trend in society is growing reliance on subsidies. Even worse economic conditions. Even the expansion of eligibility criteria. I think that the committee will approve it. The PUC, the committee will approve it. Because the low income threshold. The threshold is... I think that the committee will approve it. I think that the committee will approve it. I have the report. We will approve it. I have the report.
Speaker, at the end of the session. We will discuss the... We will discuss the... The committee. We will discuss it. We will investigate. We will approve it. We will approve it. I think that we will approve it. We will approve it. The president will say that we will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. Since the president will... He will approve it. He will approve it. He will approve it. He will initiate the... The report. He will approve it. We will approve it. He will approve it. We will approve it. He will approve it. We will approve it. The members will approve it. The project will be approved. We will approve it. 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 I think that we will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. The sports. He will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. Mr. Speaker.
I have the report.
Speaker. I have the report. I have the report. The... 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 Mr. Speaker.
I have the report. Miscellaneous. Yes, floor. The announcement.
Announcement, Speaker. I think that we will continue the regular session. And Mega-Motional Adjournment Day.
I have the report. I have the report.
I have the report.
I have the report. At the... 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 I hope that it will be approved.
Very important.
The conference room of the MOH.
MOH. I have the report.
I have the report. Mr. Speaker, the announcement. The fundraising is... Since we have a session break. At the 8th of March. At 10:00 AM. We will approve the... We will fund the... We will promote agriculture. Culture. We will support it. So please come and help to support the fundraising. We will do hiking activities. Mr. Speaker. I have the lunch. Thank you.
I have the invitation. I think that the... The delegates will... They will... They will... The floor. We will approve the adjournment. Since we have approved it. The announcement. I think that the delegate will approve it. The president of the Senate. The official of the House. I think that the delegate will approve it. For four years. He will approve it. The delegate, Marino. For four years. I think that he will approve it. I think that Friday. The Speaker, Julie Bird. He will approve it. He will approve it. He will approve it. The specialist, the chairman of foreign affairs. He will approve it. We will approve it. The project will be approved. We will approve it. The meeting of the IPIL. The delegate will approve it. I think that we will approve it. I think that the announcement will be approved. I think that April 8th. 43 days. The break. The break will be... The weekend special session. So April 8th, the regular session. The regular session. We will approve it. I think that we will... We will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it. I think that we will approve it. I think that the floor will approve it. We will approve it. We will approve it.
I have the report. This time, Mega-Motional Adjournment Day.
I have the report. I have the report.